Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southwestern Vermont Career Development Center Governing Board for the month of December. It is December 18th, 2017. It's 6:07. Public comments. Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda. We have the minutes of the Regional Board, full meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2017. I have a motion.
The move.
Fran motioned.
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Any comments? Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. I see a lot of people abstaining from these motions if they weren't here. I'm one of these people that believes that I don't see anything wrong and would have voted in favor of it, so didn't want you to think I was at a lapse of memory. Okay, payroll warrants, number 1023, number 16, number 7, and number 1025.
Number 17.
Is it 17? I apologize. 16, 17, you're absolutely right, Francis. 1023, number 16, number 17, and number 1025.
So moved.
Second.
Fran moved. Ken second. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Vendor warrants, number 1022 and number 1024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Fran, seconded by Ken. Discussion?
I have one question.
By all means.
Why are we buying the Rockland Herald? And I'm not objecting to it, I'm just wondering what we're getting out of it. Because I thought they had eliminated their report down here in Bennington County.
I believe this is probably an advertisement for our position.
Oh, okay.
Probably for the IT position, we wanted to cast one.
That makes sense.
It's what you.
I can look, but that should be.
Any others to report on us? But I don't believe they follow what they're doing anymore.
Once in awhile they'll be reported in the Herald if they'll pick up from the banner or sometimes from Cat TV, but not very often.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Seeing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you. We have the cash flow in our packets. Revenue and expenses. If I see no issues, any comments, any thoughts? Okay, let's move on to the committee reports. I believe we only have one, and that is on the finance, which Fran, Kenny is the chairman. Fran?
We met on December 6th and went over a few items. We just met today, December 18th, and as of currently right now, our budget's down almost a percent, 0.95, and I can have Stephanie give the walkthrough stuff if you can.
This is a shorter report than what we provided in the Finance Committee last meeting and then also that we discussed in this meeting. Basically, our -- sorry, hold on. This is our budget history over the last five, six years. You can see around in FY '16, we started to slowly reduce our budget. One year we had some pretty large cuts. The proposed budget for this, for FY '19, fiscal year '19, is $3,457,114. I'm sorry, I was like, I was having trouble with my -- hold on a second. I just want to make sure that I was having trouble with my -- all right. So my proposed budget for FY '19 is $3,424,190. For whatever reason, my --
There.
Our approved budget for FY '18 was, you can see above, it's about a $32,000 decrease, which represents about 1% change in the budget. This is largely due to salary savings and not filling -- and salary vacancies. A lot of the Finance Committee has asked what changes were made or what did we take out of the budget that was proposed by teachers in order to get us where we are today. We've had a couple of equipment items that we removed from the budget. It doesn't mean that the program will not be receiving them. We are just going to either come up with them in an alternative method such as proposing use of our fund, restricted funds.
Reserve accounts or...
In order to get this filled.
So one of the things that we discussed at the -- it was a longer discussion than we'll probably have here tonight. The changes from Budget A, we call Budget A, which is the total request of faculty and staff and the whole budget, pared down to what we are today. All of the requests that are up here, I don't think anyone feels that they are inappropriate or in excess. They're just, we've found other ways that we believe we can fund them or make them happen and not having them in next year's budget. So for example, the first one up there, Skidsteer, $42,000, that was a request. That could certainly come out of the, if the board chose, it could come out of the Equipment Reserve Account. We may have additional savings this year, you know, with salary savings, whatever it may be, as we get closer to the end of the school year, when Stephanie starts reconciling the books closer, what we have left, if you will. Technology equipment, we were able to save that. There's a couple of computer labs built in there. One, the teacher feels that we can have one more year with, that he is fine with it, there's nothing wrong with them. The other one, we are able to repurpose another lab, computer lab with laptops, and another classroom with Chromebooks instead of the laptops because of their needs. So it doesn't mean that we pulled that all out of the budget, it's just that we made able to fund it a little bit differently. And the same thing for the trailer, the computer lab, and salary savings. So there were a lot of changes made to the proposed B budget. These are just the highlights of how we got to where we are. We certainly think all of these requests are appropriate, it's just a matter of how we fund them.
Just for information purposes, part of, there's two factors to our budget. One is we're looking at the amount that you're going to warrant the budget for, and the other is what the impact to our sending schools. And our sending schools, as you know, pay tuition based on a six semester rolling average. And what I have up on the screen is what I'm, what we're estimating as our six semester rolling average for FY '19. You'll see it's 155, roughly, an FTE count of 155. That's a decrease of almost 4%. So part of what drives, that ultimately drives our tuition up. But this year, we had additional unrestricted fund balance that was, that rolled forward into it, allowing the change for our announced tuition to only be about $13. So essentially what we're presenting to you is a budget that's down about a percent and a announced tuition that's basically flat.
Basically level funded, right, or flat. So yeah, I mean, that's, we are down almost a percent of total budgetary expenses. And then tuition is what we have focused on the last few years, because that's the biggest impact of sending districts, is what they pay in tuition. And we have kept that relatively flat for the last three or four years. And this year, we were looking at initially around 2.8 to 3% increase in tuition, not necessarily the budget. And our last round, we're now at .07% of an increase, or $13, which is, for all intents and purposes, is flat. I can't really estimate anything more off of it, so.
Essentially.
Essentially the budget presentation of the vote.
I have one question.
Sure.
The Equipment Fund, that's generally voted on independent of our budget by the voters of March, correct?
Correct.
It's a ballot item, correct?
Yes. Included in our budget that we vote is the Reserve Funds. We have $20,000 designated for the capital, or for the Equipment Fund, and $60,000 for the Capital Improvement Fund.
Thank you.
Which we've used. I mean, particularly when the roof and those types of things.
My real intent of the question was to inform the voters that they are voting on those two funds independently.
Yes, they are.
Our budget. And originally, we put those in so that they wouldn't think our budgets were skyrocketing in a year when we might need an extra $40,000 or $50,000 to replace a machine that failed.
And we've used, you know, we've used them both in the last year, couple of years. We used the Equipment Fund last year for the purchase of the design and fab Haas milling machines, and we've used the Capital Improvement Funds consistently over the last four years to replace our aging roof that, I think it was a 10-year roof that had been used for 20 years.
Something like that, yeah. It's long overdue and leaking in multiple places, so that's, now it's, I don't know, a 20-year warranty on the roof, so it should be fine for awhile.
It'll do for 40 years.
Should be good for 40 years.
I think having a separate funds holder on it kind of keeps our budget a lot fuller than it would be otherwise.
Yeah. You know, I think that, that our ability to maintain this facility off of the programs that we offer, that are well-equipped and modern, for a budget of 3.4...
3.4.
Million dollars is pretty incredible, actually. And that we can bring you a budget that is reduced and kept to tuition basically the same without having any real educational impact in any of our programs. And so what we can't promise is that that will occur every year. The fact, I don't think it will continue to occur. Over the last few years, we've brought it down, 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 and we really are at the, I don't say bare bones, but it's about as tight a budget as you can ask for with the numbers that we have in enrollment. So it's been a lot of hard work on everyone's part, and I want to thank the Business Office, the faculty and staff, and the Finance Committee for working with us closely on this.
Just a couple of questions on some of these lines here. The second one, for center-wide expenses, is a big jump in this year's budget. I mean, it says subs, district supplies, and then it goes back down for next year. I'm just wondering what exactly that, there may be other things that that encompasses, I'm just not familiar with the $60,000.
The change embedded in that, the change that we had funded for this year that did not fit, we did not fill, was the, was a position for EMR, the emergency...
Secondary Emergency Medicine Instructor. So part of that salary benefits is in that.
Is in that number.
In that number, that 117.
And we're choosing not, and not to fund that position for next year, which is part of the decrease and the difference between this year's budget and...
So what was, what drove up the cost, I guess is my, is this a cost line?
The, are you looking, the difference between the 117 and the 30,000?
Yeah, or the year before. Like, it's sort of generally in the 40 to 30,000 wise for this year's budget with 117.
Because we put in the position for the emergency medical and we did not fill it. But, I mean, we put the position in there, embedded in there is the position.
Right, so you're talking to benefits and salary pack, or salary benefits package to come out of that 117,000, so.
Salary, yeah.
Excuse me, salaries. And so that's, at least $50,000 of that is salary.
Right.
That was budgeted for this year, the position was not filled. Okay, so instead of being in the employee benefits line, it's down there?
The salary is included in the center-wide expense line. I mean, the benefits for the salary is included in the employee benefits.
Okay, so when we get to FY '18 actual, when they see that to be lower because it hasn't been filled?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay. And then all the way down at the bottom, under Adult Education, under School Administration, next to Adult Education, there's nothing in the line for '19. But at last meeting, we talked about some new adult education programs, so I'm just curious.
Didn't we talk about...
Are those somewhere else, built somewhere else into this budget, or?
The Adult Education Program is run as a separate fund that is not part of the voter-approved, so it's generating its revenue. Historically, we had a portion of a salary position that was embedded in this budget, and since that position hasn't been filled, we have, we've removed it in order to...
Okay, so Adult, Adult Ed isn't, it's someplace else?
No, that's a good point, that we're not cutting the Adult Education Program.
No, and we're not cutting any programs that, what you've done, what we've done is essentially absorbed the Adult Education position amongst, amongst, you know, two or three of us, I mean, that's what we've done. So nothing's truly gone away, it's just that position's not funded in the, in this budget proposal.
Okay. And I see it falls under Administration, so if it was a program, it'd be up here under Programs.
Correct.
But I just was curious.
Right.
Yeah, so that's really a position?
Yes. It was a percentage.
Yeah, okay.
And that's required by the state, that we have that function.
Right, you have to have a licensed Adult Education Coordinator in the building and offer adult education programs, the scope and quality of which the school chooses or decides to run. So do you have, you, you're covered, do you have a licensed Adult Education Director?
We have one.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And the only other one I had a question about was Utilities. That seems to be going up, or we're using, I mean, it's not a huge chunk of change, but we're using more power around here, I mean, what's...
A lot of machinery.
Yeah. Is that because of the new machinery and that kind of stuff? I'm just, it's not a, I'm not too worried about it, I was just curious.
Part of it has to do with, embedded in that line is the gas usage for culinary, as well as we have one thing, and I could get an answer for you, but we have like one separate like thing that we pay 100% of, as opposed to the rest of our utilities are actually embedded in our lease payment to Mount Anthony. So they don't fall under that, because that utility used to be, I mean, like...
I ingest a lot of electricity, but it is other things like the propane.
Propane, for all of that kind of stuff, yeah. Okay. I don't have an objection to it, I was just curious, so.
Good questions.
They're all good questions.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, my wife works at Efficiency Vermont at Bennington College, and they're knocking their electric bill, you know, way down, so, but, and I understand, I'm not on a Facilities Committee here, so I don't know how that all works, so.
I've wanted to do a study of our actual usage over the years, and some people said, "Well, we might be getting a better deal if we don't do it."
Actually, I could be speaking on a turn, if I am, I apologize. I think that Anthony and Director of Facilities, Paul Dansverle, has done some sort of energy audit, if you will. I don't know the scope of it, but there has been, in the last month or two, there's been some, I know there has, because I've seen emails about making sure some things are off and nighttime and things like that. So they are looking at it, and I don't know the scope of it.
That's an update to where we were in the past.
Yeah.
Fran, you don't mind?
So I was hoping we could bring this to a vote tonight to approve that budget, so I need somebody to move it.
I'm moved, we accept the proposed 2019 budget.
And I need a second.
Second.
Ken?
Ken moved. Jessica, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Discussion, any other...
Well, discussion, yeah, any other discussion?
May I just make one comment, though? I think it's important that those responsible take their lumps if the taxpayers don't like it, and those responsible take credit if they do like it.
Absolutely.
I think that we had a great turnout for the Finance Committee. I think it's been reviewed by Francis, Ken, Ed, myself, Leon. Is anybody I'm forgetting, Fran?
I don't think so.
I think five of our board members on the Finance is pretty good. I think that Mike and Stephanie did a great job presenting it to us, and pretty much gave you the same presentation. I just think that we need to give credit to all of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
On that, any other discussion? Comments?
It's within the 1%, almost a flat budget that the governor called for, and I think every school in the state ought to follow our lead.
Yep.
It would be nice.
The nominees.
Other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand. unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good.
Action items. Do we have a nomination? Would you like to comment on that?
Sure, we skipped around a little bit on action, we just took action, I think, on the budget, but...
We did.
That's all right.
We did.
So in your Dropbox, there should be a nomination form for Daniel McGuire. Daniel is our, will be our new person replacing Sherry with our IT department. We had, you can see there, we received 19 applicants, we did six rounds of interviews. We had a pretty good committee put together of interviewing folks. The folks we brought back for a second interview, they stayed in chat with Sherry for anywhere between an hour or half a day to try and get a feel for it. We may not be a huge organization, but we have a large operation of technology and a lot of responsibility in it, so trying to find the best fit for the center. And so we interviewed a lot of, a lot of folks, and the committee is recommending we move Daniel Patrick McGuire forward to the Board for nomination tonight.
All, there you go. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
Fran moved, Ed second. Discussion. I'm going to ask my usual customary question. How's the background check?
So, I was waiting for that, Ricky. So the online check is always is done, that is already complete and, and fine. The fingerprint check, which is the full background check, has been done, and we're waiting for its results. We wait for...
What is that these days, you think?
Anywhere between four and six weeks.
Almost like time guest.
Just another question.
I can't predict the arrival window.
I'm assuming that some of his, some or all of his credits are in IT-related areas.
Yes, not all of them, but some of them are.
He has, yeah.
Yes.
Is he planning to continue his degree this evening?
Yep, yes, he is, and he's also enrolled in some of the coursework or certifications currently, so.
Great.
Yeah, looking forward to getting him on board. His designated start date is tomorrow, if the Board approves the nomination. We've been going about, almost a month, and, you know, it's time to have some help, so.
Great.
Any other discussion?
Once upon a time, somebody here took account of all our computers and the equipment involved and the servers, and discovered that we actually had more equipment than the entire SVSU had throughout all their schools, and I don't know if that's still true.
Well, I think at one point, that would have been me, many years ago.
It's worth...
Well, it may have been true then, I certainly think the SVSU as a school district and supervisory and certainly trumps the amount of technology we have in our building. The SVSU is, you know, they made huge investments in technology over the last 10 years for all their, all their buildings. And while we tried to be the forefront of technology, it's just different types of technology here. I think, I don't know anymore, I know what our current capacity is and what we have for end-user devices, we're between 350 and 400 devices. That does not include mobile devices such as iPads and labs, I mean, we're pushing closer to 500 probably of end-user devices to be managed. That's a lot of management for a person to do. And so I don't know what Mount Anthony is right now, I don't keep tabs on that, but I know, I'm pretty certain they're one-to-one for their students with Chromebooks and whatnot. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we can make a fair comparison anymore, Ed.
No, probably not. Worth noting the complexities of our equipment.
Okay, we have a vote on this, all in favor of the nomination, please raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you. Budget adoption, I believe we've already done that.
Yeah.
We announced the tuition, we didn't.
Not done that yet.
So I am requesting that the Board announces our tuition for FY '19 at $18,603. You can find, I dropped one of the little sheets in the Dropbox if you want to see it. Essentially, that's the form.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Fran moved?
Second.
Ken, second. May we have a discussion?
It's only up $13, too.
Correct.
It's up $13? So we were $18,590 last time?
Yes.
Yep.
Any other comments, thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor, right hand, please. unanimous. Thank you.
So you get that to like Arlington and all the other districts, so they can put that into their budget?
Yes, and it's nice that it's done early so that they can have that while they're doing the process now.
I believe we have internal controls checklist that Mike has just cited about.
So, yes, so there's yearly the Board, Stephanie, you can help me on this, I'm stumbling. The Financial Management Questionnaire of School Districts and Supervisory Unions, it's our internal control checklist, we don't put this out in the Dropbox, it's, it's our internal controls, and it has to be answered yearly for state auditing purposes. And so in the past, we've just passed it around for you to look at, and that's what we'll do here. The Board, the Chair has to sign it, but it has things all about our internal controls and how, and our financial controls, so.
Right, the Vermont State Auditor wants to make sure that the Boards are aware of the internal controls for the organization. Essentially, Mike has to sign and certify it by the end of this year, and the Board has, you know, up to two months to...
And it talks about things like where our checks are kept and, you know, signatures, and what's the process for purchasing and all those types of things. So it's, it's a very lengthy list that I will pass to Ricky, and he can pass it around for you to look at. It is small print, I apologize, that they all fit out in that one page, but we do it every year around this time, has to be done and signed.
Do we need an approval?
I don't believe you need, I just put it on action items so that I would make sure...
Take a look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the meantime, let us move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everybody, and the majority of the report tonight was really going to be the budget, but I do have the activities that we've done the last month, to kind of give you an update. We've had, December is recruitment month, it's a big month throughout December and January, and where we're already looking at students for next year. And so a huge push, so you're going to hear a lot about recruitment this month. Students from several CDC programs presented to sixth graders at the middle school on various career pathways this month. The CDC hosted area eighth graders with tours of each of our programs and to promote classes to ninth graders. So it used to be a three-day event, where now it's a two-day event, where all eighth graders from the middle school and Sacred Heart are invited to come and see our school. They spend almost, almost a full day between here and Mount Anthony, and they spend time in each of our programs and learn about what class they can take in their freshman year as an intro class. When they're done with their tour here, they then go to Mount Anthony, and they meet with their counselors, and they choose their classes for ninth grade, the intro classes. There's a, they choose one to 10, you know, the first choice to the 10th choice. And so we've seen a big benefit over that over the last five or six years, that paying big dividends for our short block enrollments for students, because ninth graders can't enroll in our programs, they can only enroll in our intro classes. And so we've done that every year, and I want to thank the teachers for doing it. It is fairly intrusive to have two days of tours while you're trying to teach and, and still maintain what you're doing well. You know, seeing 200 or 300 students in the course of two days, it's a, it's a lot to ask of them. Culinary Arts, two students visited the dining services at Bennington College, learning about the many aspects of food service as well as the careers. VTC, Vermont Technical College, admissions presented to our auto, forestry, manufacturing business and building trade students this month. Building trade students, along with myself, Dr. Michael Mujitz, worked with students from Ollie Stark Elementary, stocked shelves with books, being donated to the Willowbrook Community Center. The students of the CDC built the bookshelves and the funds were donated. That was covered in the paper and also on our Facebook page. Many CDC programs have, have spent the last week or so wrapping up gifts that were purchased and donated to this year's spirit of sharing families. Our Skills USA students attended the Fall Leadership Conference at the Vermont State House in Montpelier. We've had a, some, a lot of fundraising going on this month with, for our Skills USA, it was called Penny Ward, and it created a lot of school spirit, actually, where there were jugs downstairs in the atrium for a week, and a very complicated formula of who, what program wins, and the winning prize is pizza by Lori. If you've never had Lori's pizza, it's, the kids have paid a lot of money to have Lori's pizza. So it was a really good fundraiser. I know that the, the Skills USA are literally still counting pennies, but it was, it was kind of a game of, you know, when someone puts in 100 pennies, or yes, 100 pennies, and someone puts a dollar in, a dollar bill, and it negates the 100 pennies. So the goal is to really not have much in there in bill-wise, and so it really became quite a competition between forestry and building trades, really, and auto. Yeah, full jugs, so it was, it was great. Also update on our Adult Ed, our CDL class is going well. CDL permits are set to test on... CDL permits are set to test on January ninth, so that's not too far around the corner. We have several local organizations also willing to interview and host an internship when those, when those adult students complete their CDL permit, so that's coming up really soon. We're currently in week five of LNA, they finish up clinical late January, and then they will test shortly thereafter. They, the testing day has not been set yet, it's based on the end of their clinical. Also, we're now also on Twitter as well, at SVCDCofficial, if you follow us on Twitter, that feed will update as well. So, that's kind of some of the goings-on of the last month of the school, it certainly isn't everything that we've done in the last month, it's just an update for you. You know, it's, December's a short month for us, with the holiday break next week, and, you know, it's just been a busy month like usual, so we have to answer any questions. Jessica?
How, how has it been the response for the vet assistant program?
Well, we have a lot of, with a great response from the veterinary community. We currently have four of the veterinary hospital, local hospitals onboard to host internships, that eight-week internship. We have, there's been expressed interest, we just advertised it last week, has actually launched it and said we have a start date now, so we haven't had a huge response. We really don't expect there are more than five or six students that have the first, the first go. It is open enrollment after January twenty-second, students can enroll at any point after the twenty-second, they'll just put them at a further end date than their first cohort, so we'll see. You know, it's a new, it's a brand-new offering, and we're working with Penn Foster right now to get our landing page up and with our web designer and get the registration process going, and the good news is that, I know, I think I reported this last month, a lot of folks who may apply for the vet tech program, vet assistant program, will likely be covered under, could be covered under VSAC grant program to pay, to pay for the program. So, tuition is sixteen hundred dollars, that is inclusive of all materials and the internship, so. Yes, it's all inclusive of a, a computer comes with a provision of Chromebook, a student can keep for, with them, and there's potential that the eight-week internship may be paid as well, depending on the scenario, so it's good news. Hope to answer your questions, Jessica.
It does, thank you.
That's the end of my, that's.
Are you advertising to former students, too, like former graduates?
So, we've, we've just primarily organized, I've organized, been a long day, advertised on, on Facebook, and it's our best medium, you know, we can see the number of clicks on it, and that was just posted earlier this week, well, last week at this point, there's only one day, and there were a thousand views of it, so, you know, I think it, we talked about maybe doing a targeted mailing to certain communities or certain demographics, but we're just going to spend more money on trying to market it than we probably will just run it and be successful, although, you know, the Department of Labor is very interested in it, is currently on the, waiting for we O approval, no saying reason why.
One of the closest ones, you say, really only have nine hundred and ninety-nine.
That's all I have.
That's all you got, well, can I ask you to just spend a few more minutes on next month's meeting?
Sure. So, next month's meeting would normally fall on January fifteenth, which is a school holiday. What we're proposing is that, not because of the holiday, but because of the need to warn the ballot and the budget to the voters, is that we meet on January twenty-second rather than the fifteenth, so that this board only has to meet once in January. You could choose to meet on the fifteenth and the twenty-second, but the twenty-second would just be a very brief meeting to warn the ballot, so it's my recommendation, and I think the board's chairs as well, that you make me move the meeting to January twenty-second, have one productive meeting, and that's a week later than normal, but we can get all the, everything done at that one meeting, so that's. Do I have on that?
Does anybody have any comments or issues about that, change of dates?
Sounds like a plan.
And we are also entertaining a meeting of the Education Committee, I believe, at five?
At five fifteen, I think, we talked about at, on the twenty-second as well, potentially. Ed had asked for a, a meeting of the Education Committee. Normally, that meets around the time of budget season, but we've not made any recommended cuts or additions, so we haven't had really a need for Education Committee meeting, but it feels that we should have one at least to update the committee on what we're, what we're doing.
As, as you probably know, Ed is the chairman of that committee, but all are invited to come and attend, be interested in it, so.
It'll be really mostly, it'll be an informational meeting, you know, a little more in-depth than what I do for a month's, or ten months' report.
Yeah, we haven't had an update on a lot of things in some time, other than the regular meetings where we get bits and pieces of information, so I thought it might be appropriate to go over some of the things.
So, I'm going to take the chair's report, and I'm going to make it other, if you don't mind. That was one of the issues I wanted to make comment on. The other one is, I'd like to publicly thank the vice chair for filling in for me for the month of November, I had previous engagement, I was on vacation, and so I want to thank you for filling in, Ed. Second of all, I've said it before publicly, I'll say it again, we have a great custodial service in Mount Anthony Union High School. The two that are designated to our school, it is great to go into our bathrooms and find them spotless. It's, it's, you don't get that same service everywhere you go these days, so I wanted to publicly comment that their service is great, and they should be proud of what they do for us, and we're proud of them.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, January twenty-second, we need to start talking about people who are running for the board. I would publicly ask anybody interested in running for positions for the board to, to ask questions, to come to the school, to get involved and get in your petitions now. When do they have to be in, Ed?
January twenty-ninth, around five PM, when the Bennington Town Court.
Sometimes we have a lot of people filling these positions or asking to, but oftentimes we don't have people who even step up to the plate and take out a petition to become a member. I'd invite all to try to become a member. I think other than that, that's all I have for comments. Anybody else have any thoughts, questions, comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Fran, any motions?
Second.
Jessica, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, we're all going on.